To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and items that are not on today's agenda.
Norman, Manlis, Salina. Looking at this paper, it says, "Public forum, limited to three minutes." But then if you look at the regular business items on the agenda, are we limited to three minutes on these agenda items? What's the difference? Why are we being limited on free speech? There's this, you've got conflicts. I would wonder why you wouldn't address this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Lanay Meyer from Salina, Kansas, and I just wanted to say publicly to Andrew that we're happy for you to move on if that's what your heart calls you to do. We're upset for us because our little group that's advocating for jail reform sees you as a very talented intellectual, intellectual as well as a heartfelt person. And we want to say that whoever replaces you, we hope will be in that same spot that you are. And we thank you for your help so far, and we look forward to connecting with whoever else. And also today, I'm excited in wanting to hear, of course, the progress in selecting an architect company so we know, we know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, and the commission echoes your comments. And I'm extremely happy that the public is aware of those accomplishments and so forth. And hopefully, when the next person will follow in those same footsteps and down the same path. So, any other, anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda for today's public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, the motion does carry. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for July 30th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of July 30th, 2019 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved and accept the county commission minutes of July the 30th. Any additions or deletions? Seeing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, the motion does carry. Move on to item number three.
Designate architect interview scheduled with Andrew Manley County Administrator.
Okay. The purpose of today's drawing is to select the order in which our architectural firms will present next week during the RFP presentations. Our two finalists are Trainer HL from Topeka, Kansas, and Shive Hattery from Des Moines, Iowa. Saline County would like to congratulate both firms on being selected to participate in the RFP process and look forward to hearing from both in the presentations next week. The presentations for Tuesday, August 13th will be entirely public and commence immediately following regular commission business at 9:00 a.m. in this room, room 107 of the city-county building. Each firm will be allocated one hour. Following each firm's presentation, public comment and questions will be taken. Following both sessions, their sealed proposals will be open and read aloud. No action is anticipated at that time, but a decision is expected to be made no later than August 30th, 2019, and hopefully, we would even do it before that date. So, at this time, we will draw for the order on which they will do it. The first firm is scheduled to be at 9:00, and the second is scheduled to be at 10:30. And Andrew, what I'm going to do, I would like to have Lanay do the drawing. She's not involved with the county necessarily, so we'll blame it all on you for transparency. This is, the one you draw out will be at 9:00 a.m.
Trainer HL.
Trainer HL from Topeka will be at 9:00 a.m.
I'm going to have to spell that.
And Shive Hattery from Des Moines will be at the 10:30 slot. So, thank you for doing that for us. And Andrew, do you have anything further to add to that?
No, I don't think so. Look forward to both, hearing from both firms. And again, it's a chance for the public to be engaged with this process and listen to the firms and ask questions if they, there will be a public comment session afterwards, so, after each firm, so.
Exactly. And we're happy to get this rolling. It may mean a lot, and it may amount to zero before we're done, so, but.
And just for the public to know, they're not necessarily bidding on, hey, this is what it's going to cost for a new jail, this is what it's going to cost to remodel. We've left it pretty much open to them to present their proposals, correct?
It's a good point.
Yeah.
Good point, Monty. We're not bidding on a new jail or even a renovation of a jail. We're looking at, we're furthering the study, is what we'll amount to. And we'll be looking at their recommendations, which we will or will not follow, so. Pure and simple. Okay, we'll move on to item number four.
Public hearing for Saline County, Kipsoor District, and Rural Fire Districts 1 through 7, physically your 20 budgets with Andrew Manley County Administrator.
And we'll call on you, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to 2020 Budget. You have a few things in front of you. The first one is a budget trifold. This is also available in the back of the room for the public as well. You have an outline, a packet of the budget work papers that you've seen before. This is kind of the final version of that. We'll go over that a little bit later. And then a large sheet showing the changes from year to year. With that being said, we'll jump into the presentation, and I will cite things in the trifold as we proceed. So, the 2020 Saline County Annual Budget provides a foundation direction for the services that will be provided for, to the citizens of Saline County throughout the budget year. The budget document presents the plan for how Saline County will spend its resources and assure quality public services in 2020. The budget assumptions, the primary taxes are a primary source, property taxes are a primary source of revenue funding for county services. As you see in the front page of your trifold, it is roughly 50% or half of the revenue that Saline County does bring in. Saline County is still under a 2017 state mandated tax lid, so this will continue to be an issue as we proceed into the future. Inflation and an increase in service demands push the need for an increase in budget authority. As you can see, the flood damage around the county, as well as inflation, are causing us to hit that tax lid. Property tax delinquency rate has remained stable at 4%. And public safety and public service continue to be a primary, to be primary components of the current budget and will be a focus in the near future. So, the 2020 annual financial, anticipated financials, the revenues less the delinquency rate, we again have a delinquency rate of 4%. This is the rate at which we anticipate people either not paying or be behind in paying. But the revenues, ignoring that, is 24.8 million. This does not include any properties or ad valorem tax at all. This is just all the other revenues. The anticipated need, the expenses that we've, that we've determined to be a need for Saline County are at 49.4 million. You net those two together, you come up with a resulting need of 24.9 million. This is the ad valorem tax Saline County needs to collect to achieve this budget. In 2019, it was 22.5 million. So, like I said before, the resulting need equals ad valorem taxes, so this is an increase of 2.4 million from taxes in 2019. So, once you've established your need, you can establish a mill levy. Again, we, our budget process, we do the need first. We figure out what Saline County needs. We look at all of our expenses, and we work backwards from there. That's our design. So, we don't look at a mill levy upfront and figure out backwards, how do you achieve that? So, we do it the correct way. The mill levy is a ratio between total taxes and total assessed values that results or an outcome of completing the budget process and determining county needs. So, the assessed valuation in Saline County for 2020 is 607 million. New construction was higher than years past at 7.5 million. And the 2020 need or the ad valorem tax was the 24.9 million. So, you calculate these out, you get a 41.111 mill rate, which is a 2.677 increase over 2019. So, what does that mean to me, or us, for $100,000 home value? This is a $31 increase per year. $150,000 home value, 47 and $200,000, 62. You can multiply this or divide it however you see fit, the numbers. They don't change diagonally, I guess you can say. They just keep on adding up depending on the value of your house, so. All right, so we'll get into the trifold. This is the front page of the trifold. This is the projected revenues. The unencumbered funds, so any funds that either we plan on having roll over or that we did not spend in the prior year gets recycled into the system. We don't bankroll anything in county government. We use those funds to fund the next year's budget. So, this does include things like a stabilization reserve fund or emergency funds that we keep for liquidity purposes or for emergency situations. So, the unencumbered funds went up a little bit from 5.6 to 5.8. The ad valorem tax, we've already talked about, went from 22.5 up to 24.9. The special highway stayed relatively stable. Vehicle, motor vehicle taxes went up a little bit. I don't, I do not believe our rates changed at all. I think that's just more vehicles out there, more registrations. You got that from the treasurer's office. Local sales tax, I'm budgeting a little bit less this year. 2019, we're going to be really, really close to 4.6. So, I was a little conservative when I budgeted for 2020, so I moved it down to 4.5. I think the city's feeling, feeling that a little bit as well. Not too sure where they budgeted, but I felt comfortable with the 4.5 level. I anticipate will be the 4.5, 4.6 again. Miscellaneous revenue, that is all the other revenue. That's, that's a lot of other categories, interest on idle funds, interlocal agreements, reimbursements, vehicle registrations, mortgage registrations, kind of all the other things going on. So, that went up a little bit, and grants basically stayed stable as well. The last two ones are restricted CIP and restricted employee benefits. The three accounts up on the screen that have asterisks, those are all carryover funds. Those are not new revenues. So, it's not like we're raising, restricted CIP fund, we're not raising additional $6 million in the 2020 budget. That is all being carried over from the 2019 budget. Same thing with employee benefits, and then again with unencumbered funds, so. So, on the middle of the trifold, we'll get into the expenses. That was revenue, so we'll get into expenses a little bit. On the general fund, again, on the left, left panel of the trifold, you can see every single account that we have in the general fund and what, how they're changing. A lot of them stayed stable. This, this does include salary changes as well, if your step increases or retirements, resignations, whatever it may be. So, there is some fluctuations in the budget. For the most part, most line items stayed the same for non-salary line items. So, we don't keep, we don't hold each fund accountable for salary changes because those just, those just happen, so. But a summary, the expenses decreased in the general fund by $96,000 over 2019. We have two new budgeted positions, road and bridge superintendent position out of the road and bridge department, as well as a health educator in the health department. We expanded our CIP program. We put an additional $600,000 allocation to the emergency communications system and $200,000 to future expo renovation. Also in the CIP program is 215,000 for an ambulance replacement. That has been in there. It's up a little bit. I think it's been $200,000 for the past few years, but the cost of ambulances are going up a little bit. Pre-trial is also a brand-new program. You'll see that at 100% there. That's a new department for Saline County. We established it last year. That was in the courthouse general line item. That's why you see a negative 3% at the top line. We budgeted for it in that one until we created the department, so it moved down into its appropriate department. And we also have staff raises of $1,100. We started out at $700, but we realized a savings in our employee benefits. We did not remove any of the, we didn't change the plan to be less rich. It's the exact same plan, but we were able to achieve it for less money. We were able to negotiate with our health insurance providers and get a better benefit to the employees. So, we transferred money that we were spending on employee benefits for those plans and gave it to salaries. So, that was pretty recently, actually.
So, we didn't just bankroll that money into the county coffers. We're giving that back to the employees in, in the form of a raise.
That is correct. Yep. So, that is an average. We chose to do a static dollar amount this year, which is, equates to 2.3% average among all Saline County employees. We chose to do this because it, it benefits people in the entry-level positions more than it does other people. So, it could be an effective raise about 3.7% for some employees.
And, and that equates to about a 0.8 and 1/2% over what we were proposing initially for a rate. Weren't we at 1 and 1/2%?
We were at 1 and 1/2%. The $700 was, was 1 and 1/2% is what we started with. So, we were able to achieve an additional 0.8%. So, very happy about that.
I hope they're listening.
And then the step increases is a big one as well. The step increases remain allowed. That's not always the case around the state of Kansas and municipalities. You know, that is an expensive allocation, so we are allowing step increases to continue as well.
To the best of your knowledge, has, and Marilyn I see sitting back there might be able to answer this, but has Saline County ever, double now, not allowed the step increase? Has that ever happened? That is always, we have never done that, so.
Yeah. It is on some of the lists, there's, I have heard other counties doing it, but you're correct, Saline County has never done that. For the appropriations, appropriations basically stayed the same, little bit different. Still allocating central Kansas mental health, $289,000, OCCK, $208,000, access TV, 15. North Central Flint Hills area on aging, $35,000, and the Conservation District, $21,700. So, there was a little change in the contract with North Central Flint Hills area on aging. Other than that, everyone stayed the same from 2019 to 2020. Distributions, again, similar story. The emergency ambulance service, that's what we allocate to the city of Salina to provide EMS service out in the county. This is a wonderful relationship that we don't have to have our own ambulance service or a private ambulance service out in the county. We partner with the city of Salina to provide that service for all citizens in Saline County. So, it's a very good thing. Animal shelter, again, same, same story. We partner with the city of Salina to provide some animals. It's not, it's not the full, full gamut, but some animal, animal shelter services to citizens of Saline County. That contract has a small increase every year, planned increase of 3%. The transfer to EIP was down a little bit to $380,000. We actually did not transfer anything to CIP that wasn't allocated to a unique project, so that was $0 this year. Transfer to CIP ambulance, again, $215,000. Transfer to CIP expo is $200,000, and the transfer to CIP for emergency communications system was $600,000. Economic development did not change much at all. We actually had an error in 2019. The other economic development, which includes the airport authority, we did allocate them $60,000 last year. We just budgeted for $50,000, so that wasn't necessarily an increase on what actually happened. We just had an error in our budget for 2019. So, don't, I wouldn't look at that, say we gave the airport authority additional $10,000. It was not the case. The rest of the line items stayed the same. Chamber of Commerce, $35,000. Economic development, $20,000. Enterprise zone was eliminated, and North Central Kansas Planning Commission was $4,000. So, projected expenses for the special funds, again, on the interior pages of your trifold, this is on the far right panel. All the additional special funds is outside of the general fund. Most of them, most of the taxing funds stayed the same. Road and bridge basically stayed the same. Actually, a decrease of $7,000. Noxious weed was a small increase, and health department was a small increase. Employee benefits was a small decrease because we were able to realize some of those savings from purchasing that plan. The two ones that you'll see, special bridge and special road increased, they, they'll always levy their respective mills at one mill or two mill, whatever it may be, but their budgets are higher. The reason for that is we had a few delayed projects. So, if we don't spend something in a prior year, all of that money gets recycled into the system, therefore making the budget the next year higher. And last year, we had a couple of projects as we, we lost an engineer mid-year getting ready for a few projects, so it delayed a lot of projects that we were going to do in 2019. As well as the most recent project out on West Waterwell, they were going to complete, the bids just came in higher. So, that's causing both of those line items to just kind of build a little bit and make the budget seem higher. So, I don't want any, anyone up there or the public to think that we're levying more taxes in those two line items, just not the case. We're still levying one mill or two mill, which is what those accounts were designed to do, but the budget is higher. Any questions on that? Kind of said that quickly. So, the, and then the CIP account is the same, same idea. We've got three major projects going on right now with the jail, the expo, and the emergency communications system. That is what a CIP capital improvement plan is designed to do, is to hold money upfront so you don't have to borrow it, or we may have to borrow some money, but the idea is to plan for things, and that's what we're doing with the CIP accounts. We're planning for a couple of these major projects. So, that account has increased over 19 to 2020, about $2 million, 2.3 million. But once these projects come to fruition, you'll see that account come back down. There we go. Thank you. This is a, this is just a diagram of the expenses by function. You'll see the vast majority is public service. And I gave an explanation of what public service is. It's planning and zoning, noxious weed, expo, road and bridge, health department, our special bridge, special road, and our corner. I tagged as public service. The second biggest sector is public safety. County attorney, sheriff, jail, district court, emergency management, juvenile center. It's actually not the juvenile center, it's the juvenile contract that we have with Junction City, EMS, and drug court. So, you can see those two take up the vast majority of Saline County's budget. And looking to the future, again, public service and public safety continue to be the primary focus of Saline County. We have those three major projects that we've talked about before, emergency communications expo, and then the inmate population and potential jail infrastructure. I know it's, it's on the front burner to figure out what we want to do there. These projects require substantial investment, which Saline County has been preparing for in their CIP account, but additional funding mechanisms may be needed for those projects. So, as the end of the presentation, I'll switch over to one of the other attachments, the stapled packet, the three-page packet. This details kind of all the changes line by line. If you're going to reference anything, this is probably the packet that you'll reference if you want to know what happened in the 2020 budget. So, again, the revenues, the increase on idle funds increased by $400,000. Our treasurer gave a report last week and highlighted why that was. We're just getting good interest rates out there, and I think the, the prime rate is steadily increased over the past couple of years, so we're getting good, good interest on our idle funds. The other revenue was down, $177,000. A lot of that was because of the mortgage registration getting eliminated. That, that steadily happened over four years, so that's, that definitely, we definitely took a hit there. And then the $7.5 million in new construction, that's just new tax revenue coming into the system. So, we're glad to see new construction, not all, not all counties in Kansas get that. If you go to the third page, this is line by line exactly the change from, it's titled "Detail of Budget Expansion." This is exactly the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget. So, this, this will show you the net difference of exactly what happened last year compared to this year. So, the one, I'll pick, I'll pick on one line item, what actually shocked me a little bit. And the reductions, the first line item, general, the retirements, resignations, and terminations saved the county $454,000. All these positions were replaced. It was simply replacing somebody that was higher up on the, on the step scale with somebody lower in an entry-level position, not an entry-level position, but entry-level on the step scale. It was, it was shocking when I ran those numbers. And I don't think that is out of the normal. I think that just happens every single year. We had 44 positions in Saline County change, so it's an average of $10,000 per position. Basically makes sense. That's three or four steps on the step scale, so I wanted to highlight that a little bit. The, the salary raises at 2.34% was about $300,000 increase on the budget. Step increases are about a quarter million dollars as well. I think I've covered just about everything else. Are there any questions regarding budget?
One of the interesting conversations I've had lately with some citizens, and I don't have the answer, is how many properties have been taken off the tax roll recently? And do we have a figure like that? Is that, and I think that they were specifically talking about the hospital's purchase of properties. Do we have that?
I can have our county appraiser, Sean Robertson, deliver that. I have seen those numbers as well. The number is higher every single year. It seems to be growing a little bit, and it's, it's not just the hospital they're picking on. There's a lot of nonprofit organizations that are buying and selling and.
Right. And my, my, my comment was not directed necessarily towards the hospital, but I think that that was their point.
Yeah.
And you're right. I think that people would be surprised how many not-for-profits aren't obviously paying because they don't have to, and, and that effect on everybody else that does have to pay.
One question. When you, when you visited about new construction, remind me, the downtown benefit district, we signed off on a tax exemption or where it goes into a different.
Yes.
That they can use to make projects work down there.
Correct.
So, that 7.5 million of new construction does not include any of the downtown benefit district?
That is correct.
Also, to follow up on Monty's comments, and I'm not exactly sure where the, where we stand on the dark store taxing situation. I mean, by dark store, I mean like a Kmart that is no longer in business out there, so they're paying less taxes, or that's in the proposals in the, in the state legislature. But do you know, right offhand, where that might stand?
It's still ongoing. Depends on which jurisdiction you ask. I know in Kansas City, one of the dark stores, one of the dark store lawsuits actually passed one of the stages and is into an appeal stage. It's actually got past the first hurdle to, to, for, for that argument. It's not always the case everywhere, you know? You go up north into Minnesota and Michigan, you'll see those a lot more. But it just kind of depends on where you're at and what the valuation is, and, and so, just ongoing.
So, in Salina, Kansas, Kmart, and I'll just pick on them because that's the biggest one that I know of that's out there not doing business anymore, they paid the same property tax last year as they're going to pay this year? Is that a correct assumption?
I would say that's a correct assumption. I cannot verify that, though.
If their value stayed the same.
We.
And their value might not stay the same because if you use the income approach, their income is obviously down. That might be another question for the appraiser.
Yes.
Brother, are we ready to move on then, or?
Is there any other questions? I can feel questions from the public as well.
That's what I'm getting ready to do, is open it up for public comment. I'm sure someone will wish to speak.
Yeah. Norman, Manlis, Salina, Kansas. First question I got, comment, what is causing this problem?
Elaborate a little bit, what's, what's, what problem?
I'm, I'm going to keep going.
Okay.
If you discover what's causing this problem and you eliminate the cause, you've solved the problem. Can the cause be reduced? Yes, it can. It has been done in the past. I've seen it done. And this is, dark properties are going to be in the future. And this is, dark properties are going to be in the future because it's happening in other states. If this United States Supreme Court order goes through and they rule as the laws are written, there's a lot of property going to be removed from the tax roll. This has been heard in the Supreme Court this past session. They went into summer session, they read, excuse themselves for the summer session. They said, we will readdress this again in the fall session.
Norman, I would like to ask that you restrict your comments to this particular budget as opposed to theoretical dark store stuff in, in the future. And, and we're aware of that. And I appreciate your approach too. But, but our, right now, our, our focus is on this budget. So if you have particular questions regarding any line item on here, that's what I'd like for you to address if you could, please.
Well, I think it's relevant, but I will, I understand what you're saying, Robert.
All right.
I'll.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the commission on the 2020 budget? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the, the commission.
We, we don't need anything on item four, do we, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Item, item number four is, is, is gone. So at this point, we would take it on to item number five.
The adoption of the Saline County Kip Sueur District fiscal year 2020 budget. Andrew Maranley, County Administrator.
Andrew, again. I believe you simply read off the adoption, I think, of the presentation I just gave you.
You know, before we do that, I want you to comment. It's ringing and I can't come up with the exact terms of what I'm thinking about. But we borrowed last year, we're, the money that we need this year versus last year, and that we borrowed money from our own, from our own bank account last year to make the books balance to where we wouldn't have to raise the taxes in, in our reserve fund. And elaborate on how we, what about that?
Last year, throughout, well, I'll start with this year's budget process. When you, when we talk about the general fund, it's actually gone down. I think that's, that's to the, to the credit of you guys and the, the tough work that we've done, is we were able to achieve that. The, the special funds, like I said, the one mill and the two mill accounts did go up, but the taxes actually didn't go up. Last year, to achieve, we actually were looking at a three mill increase last year. But when you're budgeting, you can adjust anticipated expenses. We chose to do that, which basically cuts into your reserves, how much you're going to carry over by adjusting how much your anticipated is. In 2018, this is, things that happened two years ago affect what happens now. So 2018, we actually had, and our employee benefits line actually went up by $900,000 twofold. One of them was the capers payment went up a little bit. Their calculation requirement of the employer capers payment went up, as well as our health insurance premiums went up by four, five percent, somewhere in there. So that actually cost the county $900,000 that we weren't anticipating at the time. It was still under our budget, but we weren't anticipating at that point in time. So when we were doing our 2019 budget, we actually adjusted our numbers down. So it was kind of counterproductive a little bit. Summary point is that adjust, that affected our carryover. And so we achieved last year's budget using basically some of our savings account, some of our carryover account. Come this year, we chose not to reduce that account anymore. So we actually had to pay for it this year. So decisions we made last year, and a lot of these decisions involved the employee benefits line, the inmate population. We did add five new positions last year. We added two transport officers to deal with the inmate population. We added a pre-trial program, which is two additional people. We also added a county attorney, assistant county attorney. All five of those are associated with an inmate population issue. So to Norman's point, that is one of the issues, and we know about it. It's, it's right in front of us. It's costing Saline County a lot of money. So we are looking that problem square in the face and trying to find a solution. So that was a lot of the cause of last year's expansion. But again, we used carryover dollars to achieve it. So this year, we chose not to do that. We kept our reserves right at the, the, the recommended 15.1%. Saline County moving forward, that's on the back of the trifold, our carryovers right at what they recommend to have the carryover at. Chose not to reduce that anymore. So we're having to pay for it this year.
And I mean, the, the floods this year are a prime example of why we shouldn't reduce our reserves any further. You just don't know when that situation's going to come along. One other thing I'd like to point out before we go forward is, is the salaries and wages since this commission has taken place. Those, those increases, we have granted almost seven and a half percent increases over the, for 2018, 19 and 20. So I, I think that's a goodwill step on the part of the commission and the taxpayers that are funding that to, to get those wages up. So we're, we're doing the best we can. So are there further comments or questions regarding the budget from the commissioners?
Well, I think this, this is my 13th year up here going through budgets, and I'm sometimes amazed how, how few people show up for something like this as opposed to a rezoning or something like that. But that's my first comment. Second of all, I would say that, and, and to Andrew and your staff, thank you very much. This is probably the smoothest budget season that I've ever gone through. And I think your presentation today is very easy for the public to kind of understand. So I want to say thank you to that. And to the public also, this increase in property taxes is not being taken lightly. It actually is occurring when we're actually reducing our budget, as the chairman has, has just noted. But this, this process takes a long time. This isn't something that we just started last week. And a lot of thought has gone into this, a lot of discussion. And I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for the, you know, the polite conversations during this process. So.
Well, on the, go ahead, Jim. I'm sorry.
I'd just like to say to the public that there aren't a lot of bells and whistles in this budget. This is meat and potatoes we're talking here. And I think forward, forward thinking, looking at the emergency radio problem we have, looking forward at possible things to do with, with sheriff's office and jail service there. I think this puts us in a better position to meet those problems in the future. So.
Roger.
Thank you.
I just commend the staff on putting this budget together this year because it was just to do that. And, you know, really, the road and bridge department being such a major player in this here is that the, I, I know that we get a lot of phone calls from constituents out there about the roads and the bridges, but they're working towards resolving issues and, and moving forward. And, and with the type of materials we can get nowadays, it's a, it's tough to go backwards, you know, 30 years of what it used to be. It just, we just can't do it. But anyway, we're working towards that. And I just want to commend that that it's, this budget process, again, this Mr. Shadwick deal, it's, it's been very, very easy to put together. Thank you.
Mr. White, would you like to have any comment or?
Thanks to all. We got her done. I'm looking forward to meeting number three in tradition. Thank you.
I will comment briefly. Serving on the Kansas Association of Counties Board, they have a motto there and it, and it rings loudly with me, and that is dollars equal services. So if, if, if we expect services above and beyond, we're going to have, we have to pay for them. It's as simple as that. So, okay, I will.
With that, Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the published Kip Sueur District Rural Fire Districts and Saline County Physical Year 2020 budget.
I second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the adoption of the Saline County and Kip Sueur District for Fiscal Year 2020 budget for Saline County. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. It does pass unanimously. That brings us to the conclusion of today's agenda. Are there any other announcements or other business to talk about? Hearing none. I'd like to remind everybody that the Saline County Tri-Rivers Fair and rodeo will tip off tonight with a parade, followed by, what, four or five days of, of all kinds of activities from rodeo, 4H, concerts, et cetera, carnival in Kenwood Park. So please attend and, and support our local rodeo and our fair board. So thank you very much. At this point in time, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We're adjourned. We will follow with a study session meeting in adjoining 107B. Thank you.